Good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Hartford Common Council. All proper notices were sent. I ask that you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Shannon.
The mayor and all alderpersons are present with Alder Person Kohler appearing via Zoom.
Thank you. And you have before you the unanimous consent agenda.
I would move for approval.
On a second, by Jeff Turchi.
Motion by Alder Person Rosniak, seconded by Alder Person Turchi, approving the following items on the unanimous consent agenda, the common council minutes of October 14th, 2025, suspension of the downtown parking regulations for the upcoming holidays, Friday, November 7th, 2025, through Thursday, January 1st, 2026, approving the proposal from Ewald Automotive Group for the purchase of a 2026 Chevrolet Silverado 3500 HD four-wheel-drive double-cab pickup truck with a fiberglass service body and bumper crane at a cost not to exceed $85,280.50. Approving the proposal from Ewald Automotive Group for the purchase of a 2026 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 HD four-wheel-drive double-cab pickup truck at a cost not to exceed $45,532.50. Authorizing and accepting the proposal for municipal well and pump for the rehabilitation of well number 16 for a cost not to exceed $104,538. And approving the purchase of 600 Honeywell meter modules from Primus Marketing for a cost not to exceed $66,900. And 600 M25 Badger meters and registers from Midwest Meter for a cost not to exceed $109,200.
Thank you, Shannon. Any further discussion by council? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Posnay. Passes. Next item on the agenda is communications. Anything tonight, Shannon?
Nothing.
Sixth item on the agenda tonight is appearances and citizen comments. First item under that is the introduction of Police Officer Dominic Casberg by Chief of Police McFarlane, along with the administration of the oath of bosses by City Clerk Shannon Crowe.
Thank you, Mayor. I will actually be going over all three of our new officers at once, just to speed things up a little bit.
Thanks, Chief.
So I'll read bios from each one, and we will then move to the swearing-in after that. Starting out with Officer Dominic Casberg, and all three of the officers, by the way, are here in the front row with us. Officer Dominic Casberg serves the Hartford community as a Hartford resident himself with dedication and professionalism, and he studied criminal justice at the University of Wisconsin Milwaukee and firefighting at Waukesha County Technical College and serves with the Hartford Fire Department. Outside of work, Dominic enjoys hiking with his wife Summer and their two German Shepherds, Cody and Ari, as well as relaxing with a good movie. Officer Curtis Kubo attended the Waukesha County Technical College for his criminal justice degree and subsequently completed the Recruit Academy. He moved to Hartford from Heartland in 2020 and in 2022 was first hired by the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department as a deputy sheriff. He served as a field training officer, drone unit operator, peer support unit, and boat patrol unit. Eventually, he tired of driving an hour to work, and who wouldn't? And subsequently spoke with two of our Hartford officers about transferring over to Hartford PD. Since he started here at Hartford PD, he's noticed he takes an additional pride in his work and enjoys improving the area in which his family resides. He's married to his wife Savannah and has two children, a six-year-old daughter and a four-year-old son, both of whom attend school locally. He and his family truly love living in Hartford and plan to cement their roots here. Officer Hunter Burgold was born and raised in Marshall, Wisconsin. He has an older brother and grew up playing football, baseball, and basketball throughout his childhood. He attended Carroll University where he played football and graduated in 2022 with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. After college, he began his career in law enforcement by working at the Waukesha County Jail for about a year and then working as a deputy at the Waukesha County Sheriff's Office. They sponsored him through the police academy, and after completing field training, he worked as a deputy and worked in the city of Pawaki on a contract. He learned he enjoyed working in a municipality as he worked in the city of Pawaki over the county setting. He heard from two previous Waukesha County deputies that may or may not work in Hartford how great the city was and decided to apply. He has enjoyed the culture and work ethic the Hartford Police Department has, and he hopes to have a long, successful career with the city of Hartford. And we'll move on to the swearing-in. Shannon?
If you raise your right hand and we see that your name, I state your name.
I have, Constance Kohler.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support and comply.
That I will support and comply.
With the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws of the State of Wisconsin.
The Constitution and the laws of Wisconsin.
The Charter, laws, and ordinances.
Charter, laws, and ordinances.
Of the City of Hartford.
The City of Hartford.
The rules and regulations.
The rules and regulations.
Of the Hartford Police Department.
The Hartford Police Department.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And the law enforcement code of ethics.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
The duties of my office.
Duties of my office.
As law enforcement officer.
As law enforcement officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Would those that would pin these officers come up, please?
All right. All right, gentlemen.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, man.
Welcome aboard.
You can see a white BMW going a little faster. You kind of look the other way.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Good luck.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, the next item under appearances and citizen comments, transient merchant license for the window store and more to go door-to-door for home improvement services. Shannon?
Yep, so we have the first transient merchant license, like you said, is for the window store and more. They would like to go door-to-door for home improvement services. They are appearing via Zoom. So that's Madison. Okay. Is that the person showing?
Oh, no, Dean.
Huh?
Do you hear that?
Okay.
Is he selling windows and doors?
So the first person for the window store and more isn't on Zoom quite yet, so if we want to skip ahead to the next one, Joel is the next one. He's on Zoom right now.
Joel, go ahead.
Hey there, guys. How are you?
Good.
Yeah, we applied for a permit to Canvas in Hartford. And a little bit about our company, we're out of Madison, of course, the headquarters is there. We've been in business since 1996. These two brothers started the company, started as a roofing company, and now it's, you know, full-blown home remodeling, so windows, kitchens, bathrooms, sliding doors. And what we do is we just go around and ask people if they want to get an estimate. So we don't, we're not selling anything door-to-door per se, but we are offering, what we do is this little pamphlet right here, is just signing up for an appointment to get a free estimate on windows or kitchens, and there's no obligation, of course, to buy anything.
Super. Thanks, Joel.
Yep. No problem.
Joel, we'll have your permit ready tomorrow afternoon, so.
Okay.
We'd have someone come in, pick it up, and then you guys can start going door-to-door.
Okay, great. Thank you, I appreciate it. And I don't know if we'll get down there tomorrow, but it's possible. I just have to see, because we're in, you know, we're in Wausau or other places right now, too, so. How long was the permit for? I can't remember.
A year.
A year. Okay, gotcha. All righty. And we'll just give you a buzz when we're going to be in town, okay? So if it's not tomorrow, I'll just, I'll let somebody at City Hall know that we're going to be there.
Yeah, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Is the second one ready, then?
No, so we'll skip it.
We'll just skip it for now, then. All right, we are under appearances and citizen comments. Anyone else wishing to appear? Anyone else wishing to appear? Last call, anyone wishing to appear? All right, moving on to the mayor's report. This year, this common council meeting actually lands on Veterans Day. I would like to take a few moments to not only recognize those that have served and are serving, but those that help us remember them. We have three groups here in Hartford that do that, the American Legion, the American Vietnam Vets, and the VFW. During each of the first 11 days of November, dog tags were hung on the witness tree in Burnt Park to call attention to the alarming rate of suicides by veterans. This effort to call more attention to this issue will hopefully lead to it being addressed more effectively. Once again, the Avenue of Flags were placed and displayed in Sawyer Park, truly an impressive sight. Hope you all got to see that. These are all reminders of the importance of remembering those that fought for the freedom in which we hold so dear. That being said, this year's Christmas parade we hold in conjunction with Veterans Day was quite an event, with almost 100 entries and Main Street filled with spectators almost three-deep. It was a huge success, and I'd just like to thank everyone involved in making that Onto aldermanic requests. President Rosniak.
Well, it was a great weekend in Hartford, a very busy weekend, not only parade that you alluded to, but we need to thank everybody involved in everything that was happening this weekend in Hartford, especially take a walk around the Hartford Mill Pond. The Citizens for a Beautiful Hartford did an excellent job. They went overboard this year. Lot more lighting displays, moving displays, I mean, that was the Citizens for a Beautiful Hartford. The Bid District was involved in that. I think the Chamber might have been, whoever was involved, there were a lot of private donations on that, so please take the time to walk around that pond or drive around, because it's pretty awesome. It's really a spectacular sight.
Thanks, Wayne.
So thank you to everybody involved.
Alder Person Curley.
To my fellow veterans on this Veterans Day, thank you for your service.
Alder Person Waldvogel.
I would just like to echo Wayne's comments as far as thank yous for everyone for this past weekend, but then, yes, and then also specifically welcoming the new officers and thanking them for their service to our community, and especially thanking the veterans and for their service to our country. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chad. Alder Person Garza.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks and welcome to the new officers. Look forward to seeing them out and about. Also, thanks to all the veterans. Without you, we wouldn't have the freedom we have now, so.
Great. Alder Person Turchi.
I guess I could be redundant as well, right? Welcome to the officers. It is Veterans Day. Had some, my father and my grandparents, both, I mean, my grandfather's also served as well, so happy Vets' Day to everyone.
Thanks, Jeff. Alder Person Savage.
Thank you very much for all the services and for vets. My son. I'm welcoming all the officers. Is it all? Oh, sorry. You're all right. Okay.
Alder Person Kohler.
Yeah, just wanted to personally or through the TV screen, welcome the officers into the new positions that they're holding within the city, serving them. I also want to echo the Mill Pond and how beautiful that is. I feel very fortunate that I drive by that every time I come and go from my house, so I get to see it quite often, and you are right, it is one heck of a step up. They keep, every year they keep raising the bar, and I'm wondering what's going to happen next year, so congratulations on that. The other thing I want to talk about, I've gotten several calls and emails regarding Highway 60. This goes out to anybody who in our vast, wide audience. A lot of people are asking for turn lanes on Highway 60. Our city engineer has been helping me answer those call, answer the questions, and basically, so those who are listening, and if you guys have the same, same kind of questions, basically there's no room to put any turn lane in on 60 going east or west. It is a state highway, and per state highway, there has to be two lanes. You cannot limit one-through lanes. You need to have two lanes. So there is no turn lane that will be authorized into, you know, off of 60, you know, and if we wanted to put a turn lane in, we're going to be knocking down buildings, and I don't think that's going to happen either. The reason why 83, which is also a state highway, has a turn lane right there at the intersection of 60 as it's heading north, where 83 does end, it is not considered a state highway on the other side, it is a city highway or city street. So in that way, we can, from my understanding, we can have that turn lane on that highway, because it's not, it's not a through lane. So if you guys are getting any calls, please use what I've given you, as well as, again, Chris Walters has been great, as well as Steve in answering some of these emails and some of these citizen complaints. I don't know what's causing the, all of a sudden, the question, because it's been like this for the last 30 years that I've lived in a city, actually 30, almost 30 years, but it seems to be rearing its head today or in the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
No, thanks for the info, Joel.
Mm-hmm.
And Alder Manek, check.
Yeah, not to be redundant, I echo everybody. First of all, celebrating the veterans. My son is a tutur. My dad fought in Guadalcanal, one of the bloodiest battles in the Pacific, and I agree that without their sacrifices and efforts and love for this country, we couldn't do what we do. So thank you to all of vets. Congratulations to the new officers. It's laudable in your efforts to serve, and we thank you for that. Also, the parade was fantastic. It was my first one, I had a ton of fun. And then lastly, I want to, I want to compliment Steve and Shannon and all the department heads. As the newest alderperson, one of my first personal business goals was to meet all the heads of the departments, and every one of them was super knowledgeable, super friendly, very accommodating, and made me feel very welcome. It was, it was good to get immersed and to start looking at how all the pieces fit together. So I want to thank Steve for putting all those meetings together, so, okay? Thank you.
Super. Thanks, Tom. Alder Person Webb, sorry.
Not going to take offense. I'll echo everything that everybody said. We take our dogs for a walk at the Mill Pond, and I think the lights are amazing, and they did an amazing job. Also, thank you to our veterans. My dad and grandfather served, just like Alder Person Turchi. Congrats to the new officers. And then the last thing, we do have a food pantry in Hartford, and so regardless of your political beliefs, benefits for folks who, like, need food is really important, and so if you have money or food that you can donate to the food pantry, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Jillson. Thank you. All right, then we move on to item number nine on the agenda, public hearing. Considering the 2026 budget hearing, I declare that hearing open and reading of the notice. Shannon?
Notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, November 11th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall located at 109 North Main Street, the common council of the City of Hartford, Hartford will hold the public hearing on the proposed 2026 budget. The proposed budget in detail is available for inspection at the clerk's office from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM, Monday through Friday.
Thanks, Shannon. And now explanation of the hearing by staff. Steve?
Yeah, so again, this is the second meeting in which we're talking about the operational budget for the city of Hartford for 2026. The first one comes in October, and then you approve to get it published as it is, and then tonight, what you're doing is you're approving the levy for 2026. So again, going over just a very few quick things. First of all, the overall levy for the city is going up one cent, it's rounding up to $457 versus $456. The increase is .17%, so it's less than 1%. So it's basically a flat budget, okay? The two other things is it's a balanced budget, which means the revenues are matching the expenses. And second of all, it, third of all, it fits within the levy limits set by the state. The levy limit restriction for this year was 1.33%. It's based on net new construction of 2024. That, by way of understanding, was one of the lowest we've had in the last eight years, so again, causing a great deal of difficulty to get under. So let me explain what that means. The operational budget would have had to stay within 80, sorry, $72,000 of what it was last year, okay? All the expenses, all the revenues, the difference could only be $72,000 more than the previous year. That's an extremely low amount of money. I'll give you an example. Just a simple 3% raise across the board affected Fund 100 by over $88,000, which means in reality, you couldn't afford a 3% raise. One of the major other obstacles we had in the 2026 budget was the discovery and the situation of our health insurance. The health insurance has continued to go up to a tune of about 10% annually. Again, if we had levied for that over the past few years, you would never have been able to afford it. So again, now we're addressing this issue and need to make some changes in the coming year. But with this situation, to be able to balance the budget and get it under levy limits, we needed to address it with fund balance, so rainy day fund, taxes that were collected in the past and never used are now being used. This was actually for health insurance, so levy that went specifically for insurance, not health insurance, but for insurance. It was actually for property and casualty loss insurance. That had a fund balance of $1.6 million. We're using $632,000 of that to balance the budget for next year to offset the 24% increase in health insurance costs over the previous years. So kind of a long story to a very short issue, but again, the coming year, we're going to need to address the overall issue of both health insurance increases and other issues that are rising in our costs for the operations of the city. We have been looking at a couple of solutions for it and have found some savings that can be had in 2026 versus 2027. However, we're still not going to be able to do so completely without, again, some additional changes coming in 2027. So as soon as you approve this budget moving forward tonight, hopefully, we will start working on actually a 2027 mock budget and to get us in line to figure out what's going to need to happen in 2026 so that we're ready for 2027. Again, it's a situation of the state only allowing us to raise the levy by 1.33%, and our costs being much higher than that, especially with the growth in services that we've created, both in fire and police. So that's the situation we're in, but again, the budget you have before you for approval, again, is balanced, it fits within the levy limits, and also only has a rounding up increase of .17. Any questions? Alder Person Rosniak.
I was approached recently, and tonight, hopefully, you can explain this. We got a Washington County rate, tax rate, and we got a Dodge County tax rate. How does that all work into our budget?
Yeah, good question. So what we do is take the total cost of the levy, and then we take a look at what percentage of our total assessed value is in Dodge County versus Washington County. Now, again, as you can assume, majority of it, over 87%, is actually in Washington County. The remaining amount, and let me give you exact numbers there, I was way off. It is, Washington County is 97.27%, Dodge County is 2.73%. So you take the total dollars that we need and you apply those percentages to those, and then you take a look at what their total assessed value is, and that equates to their mill rate. So the mill rate actually for Dodge County went down 4.54%. Means the value did not go up much, but the cost, or the value went up, but the cost went down. So again, resulting in a net tax decrease of 4.54%. So that's how it's figured out. It's, if you actually take the public notice, the equation is all below that.
What part of, part of our Dodge Industrial Park is in Dodge County, correct?
Correct. Yeah, so now keep in mind, though, a lot of that Dodge Industrial Park is in a TID, and so that TID does not grow year to year, right? Because the TID is frozen in time at the time you started that TID, took the snapshot, so to speak. And we also have, like, two or three residential houses that are along Highway 60 that are in Dodge County, but besides that, yes, it would be that. So you're not expecting much growth in Dodge County, obviously.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Alder Person Curley.
Steve, for one, isn't that TID 4 closed out now?
I do not know which, which of the TIDs have been closed.
The Dodge Industrial Park was TID 4.
Okay.
That's, that was closed a couple of years ago.
That could be.
Yeah.
Closed.
The other question I have, any changes to health insurance do not go into effect until after we have a discussion about the potential changes for next year? Is that correct?
You, if you're, if you're suggesting having a discussion regarding changing, changes that, I mean, you are going to look, let me put it this way, if you are, if you want to debate it, debate it tonight.
What?
Debate it tonight, and the reason being debating it tonight because it's a part of the overall operational budget. So if you're saying that you'd like to change an operational situation, then you have to change it tonight before you approve the budget. Because at the end of the day, your, your mill rate and your levy is based on what the proposal for the budget is.
So the changes that you're contemplating for next year are already rolled into this budget?
Correct.
Hmm. That's good.
Any other questions? Alder Person Waldvogel.
Just a couple of questions on specific line items. So on the revenue side, general property taxes are shown in the 2025 budget as about $4.9 million, in the 2026 budget going to $4.5 million, so they're reducing, if I'm...
Let me, let me go to where you're talking about.
Yeah, first line.
In the revenues.
First, first line, general property taxes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Sure.
So the budget, the operational budget for 2025, $4.89... Oh, okay. Thank you. So the budget, the operational budget for 2025, 4.893. Is that you're looking at?
Correct.
And this year, it's going down 7.48% to 4.527, right?
Correct. Just asking, what's driving that change?
Correct.
That decrease?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What's driving the decrease?
Yeah, excellent, excellent question. I want to drive your attention down to, I apologize that it's, here we go. I don't have the line number. But if you looked on taxing fund, which is about three quarters of the way down, it says general fund is 45271355, correct? That's also the same number above. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. Okay. So that actually, and actually, I have to apologize. The 2025 number 4.893 should actually be 4.471921. That's just a misprint from the 2025 budget. So it is going up 1.24%. Now, meanwhile, your debt went down .01%. And so then, again, library fund, 2% and and transportation, .5%. So a total TID, out of TID, increase of .83%. That's to stay underneath the levy limit.
Okay.
Alder Person Churchy. I'm sorry, do you have another question?
I just have one more unless you want to go, Jeff.
Hey, go ahead.
On the expenses.
Yep.
So the the last expense miscellaneous other expenses, that's going from 2025 budget of $525,047. You see that? And it's going up to 622,429. So about a $97,000 increase. That's the 18.55%. Again, just curious if there's any specific drivers causing that increase.
I would have to take a look deeper into the budget of what that equated to. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
This is a good budget. We've got to commend you. We got to commend the department heads. This is a very good budget. I think taxpayers will be very pleased to see that. Their taxes are not going to be going up dramatically. That's everybody's concern when we hear about budgets and, oh, what's my tax bill going to be like and the whole bit. And trust us, this is a very good budget.
Again, just as to reiterate, Jeff was asking me the same question. The average household will, the taxes will go up $2.80 a year.
Mm-hmm.
So it's flat.
The cities portion.
Yes, the city portion. The schools I have no control over.
I was going to say, we have a school districts coming in.
Right. Yeah. And remember, you did pass a referendum for building, which would hit this year.
Right.
Alder Person Churchy?
Did you have something, Alder Person Curly?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure we make that correction when we publish from last year?
Oh, that's fine. Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we make that correction.
Yep. Yes, sir.
What is the impact on all of these city employees' health insurance as it relates to the budget?
Yeah.
I was under the impression we were going to have a discussion on this prior to passing the budget. So what what is what is the impact on the city employees?
Sure. The the impact of 3% premium contribution, I believe, is like $92,000.
Okay. And to who does that apply?
All employees, all active employees.
But not retirees?
Not retirees.
So the policy in the future will be anyone who retires will not be paying the 3%. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So once they retire, the their premium drops 3%?
Yeah, correct. I mean, if they're at 3% or if we're at 6% or 9% or whatever.
Or whatever the percent increase is, will drop off as they retire.
That's correct.
And just to clarify, we're talking about the employee employees' contribution percentage?
Correct. So a little history. I've got a whole slide on this. And I say it just to Dennis because Dennis knows my slides. But anyways, little history of the health insurance. We are self insured. For those that don't understand the difference between self insured and fully insured, we are a part of a pool that makes up one. So just the city of Hartford. So we we eat what we kill, as we like to say, which means if we have a really good year, if we have very little usage, we can actually save quite a bit of money. If we have a very bad year, it can cost us a lot of money. In government, it's not the idea of the dollar. It's the change in dollars that can kill you because you don't have the ability to increase one year over the other. Now, health insurance, because you're self insured, you're supposed to have a savings account, just like you do at home. If something bad happens, if the water heater goes out, the furnace goes out, you have your savings to go back on. Our health insurance is the same way. We have a health, we have a health insurance fund balance. It's separate from the other fund balances and we have different fund balances. This is different. Back in 2020, we had a fund balance of roughly $2.7 million in that fund balance. Over the last five years, unfortunately, we've had bad years. We've increased our costs on health insurance so that the levy went up a little bit because of it, but not nearly equal to what the increased costs were. The situation is, is that we were actually pulling from that fund balance to the tune of about a half a million dollars a year. Do the quick math, guess what? We're in year five, going into year six, we are out of money for that fund balance. You have no savings. So thus, if you actually go below budget, you're going to end up with a situation in which you're going to have to pull from the general fund balance. This is great for a couple of years, but I would like to make sure that we don't ever run out or have to use general fund balance for health insurance. So the only suggestion, the mayor and I talked about this early on, and there's only two communities in the state of Wisconsin that currently do not charge for premium contributions, only two. Okano Falls, if you know where Okano Falls is on Highway 45 or whatever it is, is it 41 as you're heading up towards Marinette, is the only other one. And guess what they're about to do? They're about to charge 3% premium contributions towards health insurance because they neither can afford it. So it's a situation where we don't like the concept. It is, it's not a good story, but it is a story nonetheless. And then we can't back away from it and we can't walk away from the responsibilities that we have. The taxpayers of the city of Hartford, I don't think are going to be very sympathetic to us to say our employees who probably who who have never paid health insurance premiums before are going to continue to pull from our savings account to be able to afford this this situation. So the bottom line is, is that the mayor and I talked about this and we decide we need to start looking at this option. And so the first one was to go to 3%. 3% is much less than the average. The average in this normal municipalities between 12 and 15%. So the answer to your question, Dean, is if we went to 12%, you're talking $95,000 times four. Again, you're looking at just over $380,000 that could be made up if we went to 12. But that's not what we're looking to do. We went to 3% in hopes that we wouldn't have to go to six, in hopes that we don't have to go to nine, in the hopes that we don't have to go to 12. But it's a situation which, again, we find ourselves in and we need to find ourselves a way to get out. So that is the explanation of our health insurance situation. We hope we had a better story, but it's not. It's not a good story and we need to move forward. Any questions?
So just, I do, actually. And hey, Dennis, I'll start using my raise my hand thing so if you could see me and you could have something to jump in on. So so as you said, it's a balanced budget. That's including the 3%. But that doesn't, you know, just so it would be very clear. And that's where I think prior to your to your communication, your sentence a couple, well, before, when you first started, that we're going to go into the 2027 budget, right, Steve? And we're going to start looking at what it's going to take to do it. So, you know, as we as we look into it, that's where the next couple percentages are going to come in. So we haven't fixed the problem. Maybe we we put a we put a small little plug in it, but it the dike is still is still bleeding. We got to figure out how to do it. And that's going to be, I think, obviously, the the council, as well as all the the community heads, come into a way to find a solution to fix this problem. And again, most likely, you guys are going to hear a little more about it in in the next, you know, as as we develop next year's budget.
Thanks, Joe.
So, you know, part of that, too, is, you know, it's it's a huge impact on our employees. They're not used to this. So, you know, I know that, you know, there's some damage control that Steve's team and the department heads are working through. And I do know that they put together a task force amongst the apartment, all the different, all the different departments to come up with what's the best opportunity and through the program. So they're they're being a little bit more invested into this program as well, not just financially, but also in some of the decisions being made on what what's the coverages as well as what, which even maybe which companies coming through. So again, more to come. And that's for the people out there listening in, the balanced budget did include this first 3%, but we got to talk about the rest of it.
Okay. So our employees are paying 3% towards their health insurance, correct? Do we have flexible spending accounts, too, for them where they can put X amount of dollars away and pay for certain medical treatments? And I believe then that's tax deductible, where it reduces their.
Tax liability.
Yeah, the tax liability?
Yes.
Yes, we have.
Post-tax.
Yes, we have. We have. What you're calling is a F-125 plan.
Okay.
Or S-125 plan, some people call it. So it's a saving, it's money you can put aside up up to a certain amount. And then, again, you take that back out pre-tax to pay off any health insurance costs and things like that. So yes, we've had that for as long as I've been here.
Okay. So I'm just looking at.
That's not, that's different. I just want to make clear. That's different than a health savings account.
Okay.
In which the employer puts money aside. It's also known as a, trying to think what the other option is, is which is kind of a, it's kind of a cover over. But anyways, it's a situation where if the city can put money aside to help offset some of the costs of the deductibles, and then if they don't use it, they don't use it. The city saves the money. One of the things that Joe was alluding to is the task force, which we've always had in place, which is the health insurance group. The health insurance group is made up of one representative from each department and along with HR, myself, and then also our advisors that we have for health insurance. That committee was proposed with two different options. And both of these are cost-saving measures that we're hoping works really, really well. And one of them is, and then between the two, they picked one of them, which basically is much more consumer driven. Now, for those of you who are not familiar with self self plans, the the concepts that they try to promote is consumerism. I want Tom to make the best decisions with my health insurance that I provide to you that, again, takes care of the issue, but doesn't cost me more than it has to. I don't want you going into the emergency room with a hangnail. Okay? That's just a very general concept. What this does is actually the program that they chose of the two would have, could have up to a $250,000 to $300,000 savings for the city. But what it does is that when Tom needs to go to the doctor and you have a procedure that's not an emergency, you can actually go on the app. And I know some people you cringe when you say an app. But you go on the app and you say, I need this procedure. It will give you a list of the five doctors in your area that do that procedure and what the cost your co-pay will be. There are no deductibles. Now, you're thinking, no deductibles. That's a good deal. Right now, our deductible is 750 for family, for most people. But still, if you had no 750 deductible, it's all co-pay based. Again, then it's up to them to make the best decisions for them and then for the city. So that's the that's the plan that this committee went has come up with, has decided on. And again, we're very hopeful that the amount of savings we have will match what was expected by our advisors. Did I just answer your question or did I just give a lecture on health insurance?
That's a little more than I wanted, but I was just, again, trying to be edified on how our employees are handled with how much they're paying and what what things we can offer to help that cause without saying, well, you know, next, next budget, you're going to be at 6%. Or, you know, the flexi account or flexible spending account gives them money to pull out and pay those extra costs and thereby reducing their taxes. So I was just verifying.
It is our hope between this 3% contribution and the savings through this new program that we have a year in which we actually don't have to pull from fund balance to be able to to pay for it. The other thing is, is eventually, we will need to to build that fund balance back up. So the the challenge isn't just to keep your head above water, but actually build up our fund balance again so this doesn't happen again.
Thank you.
Did you have something, Jeff?
I'll let it go.
Steve, we self insure. Do we self insure up to a certain limit? And do we have co-insurance takes over after that? Like 3 million or 5 million?
It's not co-insurance. What it is, is it's stop-loss insurance. So we have, we insure up to a certain amount. After that amount, the stop-loss takes over.
What's the amount? Do you know?
I couldn't tell you.
I mean, 3 million, 5 million, where are we at? Don't know?
No, it's not. It's not even close to that. The the dollar figure it picks up as like 250,000. It's, it's, yeah. And we probably this year alone have six or seven covered that have hit the stop-loss.
Sure.
I could talk about lasers, too, if you'd like to.
Dean?
Steve, for Tom and Chad's benefit, would you explain the difference between the health insurance package for employees hired prior to January 1st of 2007 and what you're getting as an employee hired after January 6th?
Sure.
Of 2007.
So in 2000, prior to 2007, the retirees were given the opportunity, if you retire on full WRS at the city of Hartford, we continue to cover your health insurance up until the time you turn 65. By the way, if you turn 65, but your spouse is not 65, yet we cover that spouse until they turn 65. That is not changing. However, back in that time period, again, you guys are boring, going to be bored silly here. The the government financing created GASP law, if you all know what that is. It's generally accepted law that states municipalities have to show the liability that they hold with post-retirement health. Okay? Now, in 2007, it was real tough to figure out, well, if Justin is going to retire in 10 years from now, how much is the insurance I pay for Justin and his wife to stay on our insurance? And how much, how many years is that? And so you actually have to get an actuarial to come in and pay them to take a look at what that dollar figure is. And then it's a part of your audit. So every audit, August, when we do normally do our audit, she will talk about what our post-retirement liability is. Now, that should be going down. And but and I'll explain more about that later. But so what they did is instead, Gary Koppelberger was here before me. What he did is he put into a place, a program in which they could identify the dollars immediately. So what they did is all the employees that they got hired after January 1st, 2008, automatically, we took a certain amount of money and put it into account every single month that you were, that you worked here. If you stayed with us for five years, you got to keep it. If you didn't, it went back into the system. But the money went out from levy into this system. And the system was a health savings account for retirement only. Okay? And so there's, there's cash in hand, levy spent today, that's going out towards a retirement plan for all of our employees hired after 2008. And so that's the difference. And so that's the difference between the two plans. Now, when someone who retired at 2000, or was, started in 2008, and they collected for five, 10 years, whatever it would be, and then they retired, whatever they collected, whatever that amount of money that was put into that account, is what they get to live on, what they have for health insurance costs, um, beyond that point till 65, right? Till retirement age and, uh, social security and, uh, Medicare, excuse me. So, um, the, whereas the employee who, uh, started before 2008, they got health insurance up to 65, no matter what. No matter what the cost is, they could stay on our health insurance. So, uh, that's the difference between the two plans. Right now, I think there's somewhere around...
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven? Twenty-seven employees that are still on the old plan, that they get to retire with full bene- with health insurance up to 65. Any other questions?
So on, on that topic, like, what, what age would they have retired? What's full retirement age?
What's that?
What's the full retirement age? I guess, how did, how did they retire in 2008, and they're still on our insurance?
So retiring on full WRS means you basically put in 30 years, if you're non, uh, like, uh, non-emergency personnel. If you're fire and E, uh, fire EMS and police, they can retire after 25 years. So that's, that's retiring on full WRS. Does that answer your question?
I think so. I mean, because what I'm, I'm trying to do, click the math in my head, is, okay, if, if they retired at 45 or 50 in 2007, 2008, wouldn't they, wouldn't they be 65?
Well, it's not, it's not when you retired, it's when you started. So if they started before January 1st, 2008...
Okay.
No matter when they retire later on, they're covered under the original plan.
Okay.
If they started after January 1st, 2008, they are on the second plan, the new plan, the VIBA plan, as we call it.
Okay.
Alderperson Turchi?
So these, you said there was 27 individuals that are still on the plan?
That's what, uh, Dean says, 27, and I, I'll agree with him. I, I thought it was a little higher than that, but...
Okay, so, but every year, that's reviewed, and people fall off potentially, or whatever the, the, your, the auditors look at that and understand what that is, and they give you some idea how much that is, right?
Yeah, every two years, we have to do, uh, an actuarial study on it for our audit, and then you see it in the audit, and tells you how much our liability is on that.
Right, so you, you have numbers on that every two years?
We do, every two years.
Okay.
But as, as these retirees hit 65, whether it's them or their spouse, then they flip over to social security and Medicare, they come off of our, off of our policy.
It's not forced, um, but in the future, we may force that. If they turn 65, they pay 100% premium contribution, which, if you think about it, we're automatically secondary, but you're paying 20-some thousand dollars for a policy that's secondary? You'd be much better off going to a secondary market, like, uh, Medicare supplement, right?
Right.
Advantage plans. Yep.
Any other questions? This is exciting stuff. Go ahead, Alderperson Webb.
I don't have a, I don't have a question, I just have a comment, which is, like, um, I think we live in reality, and like, inflation has gone up substantially year over year, and like, we are not immune from that, and we have done a very good job of trying to do right by the citizens of Hartford by not having taxes go up and being responsible spenders, but you have to, at some point in time, like, pay the piper, um, and with health insurance costs going up considerably, like, I don't love the idea of people having to pay for their insurance, I wish we all didn't have to, but that's not the reality that we live in. And so, um, uh, my hope is that we don't have to escalate from a three to a six to whatever, and I will, um, not be a super big fan of that, but I think, like, all things considered, like, we've done the best that we can under the circumstances, and, um, yeah, that's my only comment.
You know, at the end of the day, to add to your comment, is, could you truly go to referendum to ask the taxpayers to exceed your levy limit for health insurance? Imagine the calls you would get.
Yeah, I was just going to say, no.
I just bring that up. Any other questions?
We have to look at the rest of the spend that we're looking at in future spending in the next couple of years. And that's what we got to, we got to evaluate. I think we still got to evaluate all of that spending that we're looking at, um, in some of the growth of the city.
All right. Then we'll go on to the next item under the hearing, and that is, uh, appearances for. Anyone here wishing to appear for the budget? Second call, appearances for. Third call, appearances for. Then we'll go on to the fifth item, appearances against. Anyone here wishing to appear against? Final call, appearances against. All right, then, item number six is discussion by council. Uh, I would just like to add as well, um, this is a difficult budget. Put some time into this, and, uh, it was not easy to work out. But I think we did the best we could. I echo Justin's comments, and, um, we managed to keep it pretty low. Dire things may be ahead, or at least increases ahead, uh, but I think we're going to approach it the same way. Uh, we're going to address what we can and do what we can, uh, for the best of the City of Hartford, as well as the City of Hartford employees, so... Anyone else?
I just would say, as we move forward, I don't know what the mechanism would be for communications, but I think we, we need to communicate to the citizens, um, about what we may be facing. And I'm not sure exactly how to do that, if it's through the, uh, utility bills or whatever, but I think we have to have some transparency and, and, and say, "Look, you know, these costs have gone up, this cost has gone up, and, you know, these are the things we're going to be facing." Now, as a council, I agree that this is really a good budget, and a new, newcomer coming into it, I'm impressed with what has been done, but I believe moving forward, we have to, um, you know, um, let people know what's percolating.
Originally, go ahead.
It might not always be easy to find, uh, but it is transparent, it's out there.
Yeah.
So, uh, we'll readdress it, go ahead.
Yeah, originally, when the mayor and I talked about this, you know, we looked at some things as, well, two of the big issues that we have is obviously the increasing costs in fire. And we know that to be the case, because if you look at the levy on fire, it has, it's gone up over time, over the last just three years, it's gone up to two, over $250,000 levy on, for fire and EMS, and that's going to be continuing to be a, an issue. Um, as we, uh, move forward with our, our 10-year plan, and, and again, the second firehouse and everything else that goes with that, um, there's some additional costs. However, with that said, um, we are currently working on a, a possibility of, uh, removing some of those costs from, uh, our levy, uh, the city levy, uh, and more details will be coming up in the future. So when that comes available, everyone's going to hear about, because it's going to be a, 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 a much bigger issue than just the City of Hartford, so...
All right, anything else? Then I will declare this hearing closed. Uh, item number eight is, um, action on this resolution, number 3746, uh, when adopting the necessary funds for the year 2026 and establishing the general property tax.
Still moved?
Moved by Alderman Curly.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Rosniak.
Motion by Alderperson Curly, seconded by Alderperson Rosniak, for the adoption of proposed resolution 3746.
Final discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
Aye.
Nay. Budget passes. The second item under that is resolution number 3747, Shanna? I'm sorry, I'll just read it. A resolution adopting the school budget and authorizing and directing, uh, the city clerk to spread same upon the tax roll of the City of Hartford.
And just to be very clear about this, um, in the past, um, there was a question as, does the, does the school board have to come here? Does the school superintendent need to come here and ask permission? No. This is simply a, a pass-through. They're basically saying, "Do you mind if you put our line on, underneath your line on the tax bill?" That's all it is.
Yeah.
I think the new guy should get stuck with this one. We've all had our turn to getting stuck with this one in the past.
All right, so I would enter the question.
I still have a, I have a, I have a note, though. I, I get it that we have to put it through, but you know, eh, we're, we're, we're going in front of the community with less than 35% of the budget, um, going into the city, everything else is going into their funds for the most part, and, you know, we're pretty transparent, and we're up there, and then they come and ask us to put it underneath there. I mean, I think a little common courtesy, again, I've mentioned this many times, um, so I, whether they have to or not, I think common courtesy to, to the citizens of the, of the City of Hartford, they should be here and explain what they're planning on doing, what's going through it. So, um, I, I had to say my piece, and I'll vote accordingly.
Right.
So Steve, do we have the numbers for the Common School District, the High School District, the Washington County? Do we have those numbers? Are they done?
Um, I have all of the school district numbers, yes. They've come in be, between like, late last week and like, this week.
And keep in mind, they also have to do a public hearing regarding their budgets, too, so, including the college and the...
Are their numbers higher than last year? Are they lower? Any idea?
Um, I believe they were slightly higher. I don't recall any being crazy high or anything like that, just a typical increase.
So we won't get phone calls?
You shouldn't, no.
Okay, thank you.
Each school district had a referendum for building, didn't they?
Yes, it did.
All going to show up.
Sure.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
All motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Webb.
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderperson Walvogel.
No.
Tom.
Uh, Tom, sorry, Pekic.
Motion by Alderperson Webb, seconded by Alderperson Pekic for the adoption of proposed resolution number 3747.
All right, any final discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay?
Nay.
Motion passes. Under public hearings, the second, uh, item is an ordinance to amend Chapter 16 of the municipal code entitled Flood Plane Zoning. I'll declare this hearing open. Reading of the notice, Shanna?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM or thereafter on November 11th, 2025, in the Common Council chambers at the lower level of City Hall, 109 North Main Street, by the City of Hartford Common Council to consider the following: City of Hartford Flood Plane Protection Zoning Ordinance. The Common Council proposes to amend the existing City of Hartford Flood Plane Zoning Ordinance, Chapter 16, Flood Plane Ordinance, to comply with federal requirements. The proposed ordinance is required for city adoption by state law. The proposed regulations are intended to protect life, health, and property in flood plane areas, and will govern uses permitted in mapped flood planes. All persons wishing to provide testimony for or against the requested ordinance change are invited to be present. Written comments may be submitted to City Clerk Shanna Crow camp, 109 North Main Street, Hartford, Wisconsin, 53027. A copy of the proposed ordinance and maps can be viewed at the Planning and Zoning Department, 109 North Main Street, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM. Phone 262-673-8272, dated the 7th day of October, 2025, and this was published in the Daily News on October 28th, 2025, and November 4th, 2025.
Thanks, Shanna. Jacob, you'll take the explanation?
Yes, I will. Um, I apologize if the ordinance isn't redlined, uh, it gets reviewed by the DNR, and I wanted to keep it as simple as possible during the review pos- their process. Again, this is, uh, pretty much, uh, FEMA comes in about every five to 10 years and redoes their flood insurance rate maps for each community in the state. Uh, it circulates through the different, it's not all stated at the same time, but different counties throughout the years. Um, so we are getting a minimal change. Most of ours is a datum cor- correction, uh, that, that occurred, uh, with this, uh, with this flood insurance rate map for the new, for the new flood insurance rate maps. Uh, so we're just looking for approval of these. I know there are some issues throughout the county, uh, I think Druid Lake had a couple of issues, uh, but that is actually the flood storage, which is a DNR regulation, as opposed to, uh, the FEMA regulations, uh, but that is also part of this, uh, but we are not having any issues that I could foresee in the City of Hartford regarding flood storage. Uh, but for the most part, uh, this is, again, just to get approval for the city to adopt this, so that we can en- enforce, or if there is a, by chance, a flood event, that we can collect flood, uh, FEMA flood, uh, insurance for our citizens, as well as, uh, reimbursement during an emergency, uh, flooding event in the City of Hartford.
Super. Thanks, Jacob. Any questions for Jacob? Seeing none, we'll go on to appearances for. Second call, appearances for. Third call, appearances for. All right, and then we'll go to appearances against. Anyone wishing to appear against? Last call, appearances against. All right, then we move on to discussion by council. Anyone wishing to add in discussion or comments? Thanks again, Jake, for taking care of this. Obviously, this is something we have to address, uh, every once in a while, and, uh, we need to, you know, cross our Ts and dot our Is, so... Then I will declare this hearing closed. And then item eight under that is the action on the ordinance. Uh, number 1520, an ordinance to amend Chapter 16 of the municipal code entitled Flood Plane Zoning. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Alderperson Webb. Seconded by Alderperson Garza.
So to confirm this is to suspend the rules, since it's an ordinance? So that's fine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, motion to suspend.
So, but, yes.
Webb and Garza, okay. Motion by Alderperson Webb, seconded by Alderperson Garza, to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance number 1520.
Again, this is the, an ordinance, I apologize for that. So our first action is to suspend this, so that we can consider this tonight, uh, so your next vote will be on the suspension of the rules. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? All right, the rules are suspended. So then we'll move on to the action on the ordinance. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
For adoption.
For adoption, Alderperson Curly.
I'll second.
Uh, seconded by Alderperson Walvogel.
Motion by Alderperson Curly, seconded by Alderperson Walvogel, for the adoption of proposed ordinance number 1520.
All right, any final comments or discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Ordinance passes. All right. Item C under, item nine under the agenda is a petition for direct annexation by unanimous, unanimous consent submitted by Shane and Aaron Johnson for approximately .46 acres located at 3442 County Trunk K in the town of Hartford. I declare this hearing open, and reading of the notice, Shanna?
Please take notice that a public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM or thereafter on November 11th, 2025, in the Common Council chambers at the lower level of City Hall, 109 North Main Street, by the City of Hartford Common Council to consider the following: A petition to annex property to the City of Hartford. The petition area consists of a portion of tax key number T6048500P, and is described as follows: Tax Key T6048500P. The petition area will be zoned R2 Low Density Mixed Residential. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear those persons who wish to express their opinions for or against the requested annexation, rezoning, and official map revision. A map and legal description of the parcel can be viewed at the Department of Planning and Zoning, 262-673-8272, by appointment. 109 North Main Street, Monday through Friday, between the hours of 7:30 AM and 4:30 PM, dated this 30th day of September, 2025. This was published in the Daily News on October 28th, 2025, November 4th, 2025, and six notices were sent.
Thank you, Shanna. And Jacob, you're taking explanation on this one?
Yes, I am. Uh, 340, or 3442 County Trunk Highway K, uh, this has appeared in... Three forty, or thirty-four forty-two County Trunk Highway K, this has appeared in front of the Joint Plan Commission with the Town of Hartford. They don't vote on anything, but they, they all came to the conclusion that this was in the best interest of the property owners due to the fact that they're looking to connect to the city sanitary sewer because their septic is failing. And then also it went in front of the Plan Commission, which also recommended positive, or made positive recommendation to the Common Council for approval. So this is the parcel area. It's hard to see. It's this one right in the middle. It's a very small, you know, that, unfortunately, oh, there it goes. So it's that little parcel right here across from Landmark. It's pretty much a balloon on a string. Everything around it is City of Hartford. So this will just close that or pop that balloon and then I'll make it part of the city. The valuation impact, three forty-four, or thirty-four forty-two County Trunk Highway K is assessed value at two hundred twelve thousand dollars and, or two hundred twelve thousand, two hundred dollars in twenty twenty-five. Of the two hundred twelve thousand, two hundred dollars of assessment, forty-six is in land value and a hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred is in value of improvements pursuant to state statutes. The city would be required to pay the Town of Hartford town taxes on thirty-four forty-two County Trunk Highway K for five years, so approximately two hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents per year is what we would owe the, the Town of Hartford regarding the annexation of this property. It's a pre-existing structure. There's two people that live there. So it really won't have an impact on the school district because it's already in the school district. It's already dwelt, or it's already a dwelling unit. It's nothing new. It's already covered by our protective services. And again, it'll be rezoned to R two once it's zoned, or once it's annexed into the city. The default is A one, but they requested R two because it is residential in that area. And again, it's within the sewer pack, twenty-year sanitary sewer service boundary. This is just a kind of a more detailed image of the parcel. The, it's a plat or a plat of survey for the parcel, but this is what would be annexed in to the city.
Thanks. Any questions for Jacob?
Dean?
Is that next to that accounting firm that just moved out there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one. So just to understand, they approached us to annex them in because they're having a failure in their septic system and they want to connect to our utilities. Is that correct?
That is correct. In order to connect to our utilities, you have to be within the city limits.
And is the, so I can continue if you don't mind. I got a couple more fired questions. So is there, is all the infrastructure already in for them just to tap in with the lateral to their, their house, or do we have extra cost going into that?
We do not have extra costs. It would be upon the property owners to tap into our utilities. They are, I believe, some of it is right in front of their house. Some of it might be on the other side of the road, but again, that cost is put on the property owners as part of their connection to the city. I don't believe there was a lateral put in when they redid the road recently, but I can't verify that.
Okay. And then just the last question I have is, so by us bringing them in, there's going to be a tax that we need to be paying off to the Town of Hartford. Is that tax being collected through the city and then just transferred over to them? Or is this a new tax that we got to pay towards the Town of Hartford?
I believe every year we just give them a lump sum of, lump sum of all the properties that we owe taxes on. I think Steve can answer that better.
Yeah, so the, the situation is, is that we charge them taxes just like we do anybody else. What we pay them is what the township was paying or was getting for that property at the time of the annexation. Anything additional, any additional taxes would stay with the city. Now, I believe Jacob can tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe that is in the tit. Is that correct?
Uh, that is not because it was in the Town of Hartford at the creation of the time.
Yeah, okay. So that would come back on the general fund then?
So, but we are collecting taxes and is the tax rate higher than what they're, the town, so there will be, there will be some, even though we're paying the Town of Hartford, there will be some, some tax money remaining within the City of Hartford then?
Correct.
As well as the property value will increase because they are then connected to sanitary utilities, which generally increases the value of the land.
Thanks for that, for that clarification.
Thanks, Joe. Jeff?
And Joe, we indicated that it was like something like two hundred and some odd dollars for five years, or each year for five years.
Two hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents per year.
Per year, Joe. I don't know if you got able to hear that or not.
Oh, yeah, I heard.
That was already stated in the comments.
Well, it's what we owed, correct, yes. Okay.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to appearances for. Appearances for annexation. Third call, appearances for. State your name and address.
Shane Johnson, three four four two Connie Road, K, Hartford. I was up here talking about this before. You know, we just, we have, in our sewer line, we have roots and stuff, and we've received advice that the septic system was going to fail shortly, most likely, and it just made sense to try to become part of the city. We're surrounded by the city anyway. And we're going to be selling the, the home within a short period of time and we want it to be moving ready, so that's all.
Thank you. Any other appearances for? Last call, appearances for. All right, then we move to appearances against. Any appearances against? Last call, appearances against. All right, seeing none, we'll move to discussion by council. Council have any further information or discussion or questions, Dwayne?
It's just ironic that the night of our budget meeting, we're welcoming one more taxpayer into the City of Hartford. Steve, that'll help, won't it?
Yeah, that should take care of it.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
All right, anyone else?
Oh, my gosh.
Jeff?
Just for reference, it went through like, like we indicated earlier through the Planning Commission and also the Joint Planning as well unanimously, so. In case anybody was interested in the vote.
All right, anything else? Then I'll declare the hearing closed. Next is the action on the ordinance. Again, this is an ordinance. If you want to take an action on it, we do have to suspend the rules, so what do I?
I'm motion to suspend the rules.
I'm motion by Joe Kohler to suspend. Grab a second. Second by Jeff Turchi.
Motion by Elder Person Kohler, seconded by Elder Person Turchi, to suspend the rules for immediate consideration of proposed ordinance number fifteen twenty-one.
All right, any final discussion? Again, this is on the suspension of the rules for this. Seeing none, all those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
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 Nay? All right, rules are suspended. So any, I have a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
And a second by Elder Person Waldvogel.
Motion by Elder Person Turchi, seconded by Elder Person Waldvogel for the adoption of proposed ordinance number fifteen twenty-one.
All right, any final discussion by council? Again, this is for the approval of the ordinance. All those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
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 Nay? Ordinance passes. All right, item ten on the agenda, standing committee reports, finance and personnel.
Three items for discussion tonight. First of all, discussion and consideration approving a cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping device retail license for Swing Anytime LLC for premises located at forty-nine Liberty Avenue. Shanna?
So Swing Anytime, as you can see, they requested a cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping device retail license. We don't have any issue with it. They paid all their fees, filed all their forms, and the police department approved, so I'm just looking for final approval.
Any questions or comments? If not, back to you, Mayor.
All right, so the first item in front of you is a discussion and consideration of approving the cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping device retail license. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Pekicek, second by Elder Person Webb.
Motion by Elder Person Pekicek, seconded by Elder Person Webb, approving a cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping device retail license for Swing Anytime LLC for premises located at forty-nine Liberty Avenue.
Any final discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, sign them by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item number two, discussion and consideration of approving the personal use of city vehicle policy as presented for Chief Tony Burghart. Steve, were you taking this?
Yep. So again, as we did with the Finance and Personnel Committee, this is just simply approving a policy regarding the future use of a city-owned vehicle for an emergency personnel used to take home with them. As you're aware, Chief Burghart does not live in the City of Hartford, but more so in Ridgefield area. And he has, had requested if we would look to do so. Before we do so, we needed to put together a policy statement by which not only would he use, or but any other emergency personnel that would request this could use also. During the Finance and Personnel Committee, Elder Person Webb had talked about amending number six on the personnel policy, which talked about fuel used during home-to-work and work-to-home transportation would be covered by the employee. He asked to also add, or any other private use. All other fuel used for official business will be covered by the appropriate department fund. So the Finance and Personnel unanimously approved the policy moving forward.
Questions or comments, Justin?
I think we also approved it, saying that it would only apply to department heads.
Right.
Uh, would you say emergency personnel? Emergency department heads or all department heads?
We said department heads, I think.
Okay, department heads then.
All right, who else? Dean?
Because of Chief Burghart's use of this vehicle, let me back up. Tony got the, unless I'm wrong, you got, you wrote the grant to get the vehicle. It is, it's a fully staffed, or staff, equipped emergency vehicle, which reduces the amount of time to respond to emergencies. And I can see no reason why we should penalize the guy that's doing this by, by reducing his income. So I want to take that notation out of the executive summary that refers to foregoing his two thousand twenty-six anticipated raise of two point five percent.
Just to understand, we're not penalizing him. That was his recommendation.
Okay, then in that case, I want that recommendation taken out.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, if this is for discussion, we got to seriously consider this. I know this passed and I think this is a great thing, you know, but, you know, we're not in a business, in my opinion, to be supporting company-owned vehicles for private use. I know a lot of companies do that. For the taxpayers' dollars, Alderman Curly, I'm completely against what you said. I mean, that was probably about the only thing that really kind of helped maybe support his thought, was his, his foregoing that his pay, because then it was a savings, where now it would be a cost to the city for the most part. I also feel that part of the, part of the fire and rescue group, you know, the protocol is for them, when the call goes out, they do have, you know, a hierarchy of who's in charge, what's going on. Yeah, maybe quicker response for him to get to maybe a location, or maybe not. Maybe he's driving right past the Hartford to go out to Houston for it, if that's the case. Again, I think that this process, this policy is not, not just for this gentleman, but it's going to happen across, and it can happen across all units. We have a police chief that lives out of the city. He did not ask for a private vehicle back and forth, nor did we provide him with one. He is also considered an emergency response, and it could go on. We have never had this come up to us because fortunately, the prior chief lived right here by the high school and lived in town, and it was not an issue. But I think part of, part of serving the community is maybe living close to the community and being able to, to adjust what the community has. So at this point, I, I will be very clear that I will vote against this, this recommendation and in, in the policy for this.
Elder Person Turchi?
So can you explain to me what this vehicle is? So this is a specialized vehicle?
It's a former squad car. Every year, we retire two or three squad cars. These are obviously Ford Explorers. They're, I hate to, I hate to quote the Blues Brothers, but I mean, it's beefed up for a police officer vehicle, for those who didn't understand that reference. But anyways, the bottom line is, this is a vehicle that would normally have been traded in for a dollar figure. Right now, I think in those Explorers, we're getting somewhere between eight and ten. Scott, you can tell me if I'm correct. And we actually transferred that money from the Fire Department to the Police Department to offset their cost for the new vehicle. So that was already done. The vehicle is already a part of the Police Department and the Police Department paid the Fire Department for it, uh, Fire Department paid the Police Department for it. So it, it, again, it's a vehicle already in play.
Okay, so it's just a, there's nothing that it's outfitted for fire?
No, except for light sirens, things like that.
Yeah, things like that, okay. All right, so it's just a, a normal, okay, it's a vehicle that is just, all right, painted differently.
I think what adds to the confusion here is we talked about department heads using it, so Scott McFarley could use it, Randy Witouchik might want to use it.
And again, I, I, I'm, I'm going to advise you to be very careful where you go with this, and the reason being is I have twelve department heads.
Right.
Remember, we liked the idea, and, and back in, back in my day, young man, all department heads and things had to live in the city, and that was just the way it was. Today, we don't have that, and that's, that's fine. And we were, we're looking for the best person, not the best person who lives in Hartford. But that being said, if you open this up for any department head, that's twelve people all taking cars home. My insurance already went up twenty-four percent last year. If you take a look at your budget, you probably saw that under the Clerks Department, I think it was Clerks Department where you had, yeah, where insurance budget went up quite substantially. So be very careful with this one. And, and I would, I would urge you just to look at it on a case-by-case basis. And if we have the, the vehicle available, as Police and Fire Department has, or Police and Fire Commission has already voted on this in support of it, but we already had the vehicle. It was already paid for. Again, there's value to it. Tony clearly showed that he was the only fire chief that did not, was not offered that as a part of their pay and benefit program. And so it, it made all the sense in the world. But again, don't, don't get, be so close to opening this up because there's another department head who, who doesn't get a car either, and I drive my car everywhere and every place on my own.
I said that because it was discussed at our finance meeting about who's going to use this.
Yeah.
So.
Do I still have the floor, though? Did I finish?
I thought you were done, but.
No, I mean, that's the way it works on this, this council, yeah. So it's just a vehicle. What's the vehicle do now?
What's that?
Where's the vehicle now?
Across the street.
Okay, who uses it?
Just him. For non-emergency purposes, in other words, when the chief has to go out to a meeting, when the chief has to go to something else, maybe the chief would actually have to go out to an emergency situation in which we already have the vehicle, you know, the, the, the trucks, the fire, the fire trucks already at the site, he would take this as an emergency vehicle.
Okay, so it's, the sole purpose of this vehicle is for the fire chief?
For the fire chief for the most part, but however, I mean, on occasion, if there was an additional person who needed a vehicle, like our fire inspector, something like that, and the, another, the other vehicle was gone, you see our red Suburbans that we normally have out there, pickup trucks, things like that, that we use for different things, we can, I mean, other, another personnel staff could use it, but for the most part, it's the chief's.
Okay, so it's majority of the time for the chief, okay. So what's the additional cost for this?
Well, I mean, when, when. Well, I mean, when, when we transferred that vehicle over from the police to fire, I mean, the fire department picked up the difference, which is the $8,000 trade-in value of the vehicle. You have the insurance on it, just like your vehicle at home.
To clarify, what's the additional cost for this request? Because that's already a sunk cost, right? I mean, are we having?
I don't, I don't really see that there is an additional cost for him to take at home, because he's paying for all the gas to give it.
So we don't have to, we don't have to insure it differently, we don't have to do anything?
No, no. And we've talked to our insurance companies about this policy and about the concept. Matter of fact, I believe the insurance policy, correct me if I'm wrong, was actually sent to us from our insurance company.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
They approved it, yeah.
Okay, so there's no additional cost?
No.
For it, okay. So, so to clarify, are we voting on that this vehicle is specifically kind of like a one-off vehicle? It's for the fire department, it's primarily used by the fire chief, and this is the only thing that we're really talking about?
Correct.
We're not talking about any other vehicles, any other department heads. This is just kind of like that odd, one-time thing.
The vehicle policy statement is something that you would then repeat and use if you decide the police chief, the future police chief would use one. The future city engineer, the future, whatever it would be, would use it, you'd use the same kind of policy.
All right, so if I still have the floor, is this a slippery slope?
Yeah.
Is it?
Well, I mean, I, when, when you were talking about the fact of any department head could do this, I've got a department head meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00. I don't want to see how many will be in line for a vehicle. I think already Jacob said he wanted a Z-24 for zoning. So anyways, but nonetheless, I mean, financially, this made sense, too. It made sense to, to us, because we already owned the vehicle. There really was no additional financial cost for this. Well, there's warranty on the vehicle, obviously, but at the end of the day, there wasn't really, financially, it wasn't a big issue for us. Now, if somebody else came in and said they wanted a vehicle, we'd have to take a look at the financial wherewithal, and if the city wants to continue to do this. I will repeat, the city is not cash flush right now. We just passed a budget which shows we have some, some, some issues ahead of us. I'm not looking to find more expenses.
I think some of the confusion here, a big question that came up earlier, is the fire chief going to use this daily from home to Hartford?
Yes.
Okay, because that wasn't clarified earlier, so, Tom?
Um, I, I agree with, with Alderman Kohler that we could be opening up Pandora's Box here. However, I would like, I would prefer to see the policy come back to us with the stipulation that any future request for a vehicle of this, of this policy has to come through council. We have to be able to assess the need, and if it's valid, if it's a valid request. So I would say that you would eliminate the car blanche here with that policy right now, but, but I can't approve it unless I would see, like I say, any future requests have to come through us.
I have no problem with the concept.
Justin?
Yeah, I don't have, I actually agree with that, and I think there was also confusion before. The whole reason the department head portion came up is because you said, Steve, that like, this policy would apply to anybody, and so we were trying to put some, some liminal on it. But I think, I agree, like, this should come up for a single individual for approval. At this point in time, this should only apply to Tony and this particular vehicle. I also agree with Alderperson Curly that like, like, I don't think it makes sense, if this is actually a net benefit to the city, why we would ask him to take some reduction in his pay.
Again, I'll repeat, we didn't ask him that, he proposed that.
Alderperson, Waldvogel, go ahead.
And I know Alderperson Kohler has his hand up, too, so.
Joe, you're on.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Just my point of clarification is, I guess, a couple. We're saying if we, if we don't take the reduct, the, forego the increase in salary, then it's just net neutral. The savings that was quoted in the executive summary was based on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, okay, net neutral in cost now, is there thinking down the road, when this vehicle's end of life, would we replace it?
Yeah, so more than likely what you do, because again, it's convenient to have an emergency vehicle that already has lights, sirens, things like that, you'd more than likely go to Scott's used car lot over here, and Slippery Scott could give us a deal on another squad car.
Sure. We're always going to have police vehicles being turned over, so.
Right, but, but so potential surplus, potential cost there, because there's this 8,000 to 10,000 trade-in value that the fire department is paying the police department, right?
And let me go back on, on one thing, too. Both Alderperson Curly, Alderperson Webb brought up the idea of, well, what if we just say, yes, you can do this, but you don't have to give up your, you know, we're turning down your offer to relinquish your raise for next year. You can do that, the budget currently has that savings already in it. It just means you're, you got a budget, we're throwing $2,300 on top of the expenses and hope that you're fine at the end of the year, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so, so once again, once again, you know, again, there is a cost to this. We are still, if you read the letter, we're still maintaining the vehicle, we're still doing everything but putting gas in it to and from his home. Doesn't say any, I don't see, I didn't see anywhere we added any other personal use, if he's running to the grocery store, or whatever it may be with it, number one. Number two, it isn't a push-through, and something maybe we should be looking at, then if we have vehicles, old squad, squad cars, that we can still use and utilize, then maybe we help to revisit our, our turnover rate on how quick we return cars and get new, new vehicles. So once again, I, I still stand against this. This is, this is setting way too far of a precedence, and especially in a time where, you know, Alderman Curly, you don't even want to take a stance in even redoing the, the chambers. And, and here we go, looking at, you know, given, giving away a vehicle for personal use, I just, to me, it just does not sit right. And once again, it's, it's my personal feeling that we're not in that business to providing cars. When he signed, when he came out of the city, that was there, where it was at, we haven't changed it, and I'd like to continue with our policy here.
Thank you, Joe. Was there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll gladly turn this back to you, Mayor.
All right, so we are back to the discussion and consideration of approving a personal use city vehicle policy as presented for Chief Tony Burghardt. I might add, before we go any further, that we go back to the executive summary and make this just for Chief Burghardt, as it was set up. But I do like the inclusion of Alderperson Webb about the fuel language that should be added. That way, again, this is a specific instance, and then any other specific instance would have to come before us, because this only applies to him. Anyone else? Justin?
I'll make a motion to approve this with the fuel language, with this solely being Tony, and with it going before the council for anybody else, per Alderperson Tom, and I will include the rejection of the offer for the salary.
I'll second that.
All right, you have a motion and a second, Shanna?
Motion by Alderperson Webb, seconded by Alderperson Curly, approving the personal use of vehicle policy as presented for Chief Tony Burghardt with the amendment to paragraph six to include any other private use. It will be stated that it's solely for Tony, and will add the language that further requests are to come to council each time.
Did that include the fuel thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I?
Go ahead.
The motion, I believe, that Alderperson Webb, did you also mention something about the salary?
Yeah, rejecting his offer for the salary.
And to reject the 2.5% salary, his, how to word that?
Forgiveness.
Forgiving his request for the.
Give back.
We'll give back his 2.5% salary. Does that work?
Removing of his waiver.
Does everyone understand what is before them, before we go on? That's quite a few additions and subtractions and multiplications and.
Sure.
All right. All right, so you have a motion and a second in front of you for the amended, motion in front of you. Any final discussion or comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The polls nay?
Nay.
Nay.
You want to do a roll call?
Yes, roll call, please.
Alderperson Garza?
Aye.
Alderperson Kohler?
Nay.
Alderperson Rosniak?
Aye.
Alderperson Turchi?
Nay.
Alderperson Webb?
Aye.
Alderperson Curly?
Aye.
Alderperson Savage?
Nay.
Alderperson Waldvogel?
Nay.
Alderperson Petchacek?
Aye.
All right, one, two, three, four, five.
Four. Alderperson Kohler, what did you get?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's five ayes and four nays.
All right, so motion passes five to four. All right, third item on the Finance and Personnel Agenda, Alderperson Rosniak?
Final item, discussion and consideration of authorizing appropriate city officials to enter into the 2026 collective bargaining agreement and sign a letter of agreement with WPPA Lear Local 464, pending any legal language edits if necessary and approval by WPPA Lear Local 464. Chief?
Thank you. At the end of 2025, the collective bargaining agreement that's in place, and has been in place for the last three years, to be expired. City administration and the command staff of the Hartford Police Department have been in negotiations for the last several months with WPPA. Of course, this is two things that we talk about. We talk about management rights, and we talk about wages and benefits, those two things. Management's rights went very well. There's very few changes in this contract. We pulled in a couple of side letters that have been developed during the last contract period, and there was some language change, some actually grammar cleanup and things of that nature. And then city administration worked on the wages and benefits portion. So what we're looking at with this one-year contract, and to explain the one-year, because a question was brought up in the last, in the Finance Personnel, this is a one-year. Normally, we do a three-year, but as you've heard during this meeting tonight, with some of the unknowns and some of the work that we need to do on the 2027 budget, we thought it prudent to do this just as a one-year package. We will come back in 2026 and discuss a three-year, which is our normal, but there's some things that we need to do to work forward on that. So what this is, there is both a contract, red line version, if you have it in front of you, as well as a side letter, and the contract increase is a two and a half and two and a half split, 375 total levy impact. So that's two and a half in December at the very end, two and a half on July 1st for the wage increase. The side letter addresses a portion of the CBA that talks about the health insurance, which you've also heard a little bit about tonight as well. And what this does, it's, it's their agreement, it's their agreement requiring them to pay the same percentage as non-represented city employees pay for hospital and surgical insurance premiums for the contract year 2026. So those two things put together are what we negotiated on. The union has ratified this, and the Finance Personnel Committee has unanimously voted to move this forward.
Any questions or comments on the contract? I'd recommend all of you take time to read through it, because there's some interesting benefits in there, some interesting pay scales in there. It's quite a good contract. Thank you. Okay, back to you, Mayor.
All right, so you have in front of you the collective bargaining agreement. I entertain a motion. Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Garza. Shanna?
Motion by Alderperson Turchi, seconded by Alderperson Garza, authorizing appropriate city officials to enter into the 2026 collective bargaining agreement and side letter of agreement with WPPA slash Lear Local number 464, pending any legal language edits if necessary and approval by WPPA slash Lear Local number 464.
All right, any final discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Polls nay? Motion passes. All right, then we go to the 13th item on the agenda, City Administrators Report. Steve, the third quarter general fund results?
Yes. So every quarter, we come back and talk about any issues that we're having financially, primarily in Fund 100, it's your general fund. Again, the, the purpose for doing this, for the new individuals who are on the board, is we'd love to let you know when there's a red flag that comes up prior to when we do the end of the year, when we find out, by the way, we were, we had a horrible year. So this is a, just kind of a quarterly check to find out how we're doing in Fund 100 primarily. As you see, the city is at 81.74% of the general fund revenue at the end of the current third year. This is 3% higher than the prior nine-year average, which is 78.95%, so that's good. Total general fund expenses for the current third-year quarter was 73%. That percentage is slightly higher than the average of the prior nine years, which is 71.24%. Some of the major overages and line items include the need for new chiller of the air conditioning unit on top of City Hall, which was an unexpected cost of $25,000. So again, that made that line item go well over budget. Some unreimbursed expenses, which will be paid back by a developer for engineering work, is again, expenses coming in, but revenue's not covering that yet. And many expenses from the fire, which was, which will be reimbursed through a grant which shows on the revenues, which will show on the revenue side. So again, overall expenses slightly higher, but nothing too dramatic in that area. Again, if you look at the revenues versus expenses, we are ahead of revenues by 1.2 million, in revenues by 1.2 million, which is a dramatic increase over the second quarter, which we're at 1.3 million in the red. So a big shift in the third quarter with some revenues that came in. If you look at the trends, we're predicted to have a surplus of just under $200,000 at the end of the year, which would be better than they budgeted, which was a deficit of 103, so about a $300,000 swing. Again, these numbers show no major red flags, which should be coming up at our audit, which again, you will not see until August of next year. But again, each department is notified of any line items in which are currently above the 75, 85% mark, and asked to justify for those purposes. Any questions that you have? By the way, if you're following at home, that's page 96 of the 160-page packet. I know you all read this.
I did.
We all did, but not right now.
Nothing else? Mayor?
All right, then we go on to Item B under the City Administrators Report, discussion and consideration of recommending approval of ANN Contracting of Hartford to renovate City Hall Council Chambers for 46821, plus cost to repair walls will be done on a time and material basis to an additional $8,179 for a total of $55,000. Steve? Oh, I'm sorry, Randy?
Yes, we were bringing this back from October. Again, this was a 2023 capital improvement plan that included renovating the walls, coverings, replaced carpeting and paint. There was budgeted money of $40,000 for this and CIP funding into 2023. We are utilizing leftover 2024 CIP funds for a total up to $55,000 as needed to complete the project, with the recommendation of ANN Contracting doing the work. City has a long history with ANN. Their estimate was the low bid of the two we received, and they're able to meet the scope of work that we require.
Just a reminder, this was by Just a reminder, this was borrowed funds from 2022, as we only do borrowing every two years, so every even year. So this would have been borrowed in 2022 to be done in 2023. Due to other outside issues, again, has not been done yet. Again, that was CIP, so capital improvement plan budgeting and borrowing, which was a general obligation debt. Again, normally, you clear that money out every two years when you do your next borrowing. But again, we kept this on the books just simply to finish this project when we had the time to do so.
Dean?
What happens to the money if it's not spent? Does it, can we just return it?
Borrowed, how much time do you guys got? I could go into the whole synopsis. So borrowed funds, basically, an arbitrage ruling says you have three years to spend borrowed funds. Arbitrage was put into place because they didn't want you getting that great deal of 2% money because of we're a government and then taking that money and investing it at 5.5%. That was kind of a no-no. So they said you had three years to spend the money. Now, what happens if you don't spend the money? Well, can you return it? Well, you could just pay off the loan that you have that's still sitting there because every loan we have is either a 10-year or a 20-year loan. 20-year is for a building. 10-year is for everything else, so streets, cars, things like that. So you could just take that money and reduce the amount of debt that you have by the $55,000 that you currently have out. The other thing you could do is you'd have to find some other project that again, could be, you could use this money for, that has a similar life expectancy. So if this project would expect to have a life expectancy of 10 years, you could find another project that again, you're planning on doing in your CIP that had a life expectancy of again, at least 10 years, and you could use it on that.
But Steve, isn't the arbitrage clause in there because only if you would use that money and to say invest it, and that would be, the arbitrage would be based on the profits that you make on the money?
Arbitrage is basically the stating that you're not meant to borrow funds at a lower rate for the purpose of not spending it within three years.
Okay, but from what I've found on borrowed money, and if, everything seems to indicate that you can't use it to make money off of it.
Correct, and that's, that's the general reason they create the law.
All we want to do is return it.
What's that?
I said, all we want to do is pay back or pay down debt.
You could use it to pay down debt.
Okay. Back to my original point back in October, I don't think this room needs any, outside of some minor repairs to the wallpaper and having the carpeting steam cleaned, I don't think we need to spend $55,000. Maybe if you want to get somebody in that's good at wallpapering, just to touch up the spots that need a little glue, fine. And if you want to get it steam cleaned, fine, call Stanley Steamer. But I don't think we need to spend $55,000 in here or in the hallway.
I tend to agree with Alder Person Curly, and I guess my additional comment would be, if we're a community of 16,000 people, I'd like to see us spend on projects that affect 8,000 people or 10,000 people or all 16,000 people. I don't know the statistics of how many people use this room, but I'm guessing it's less than 500 or so.
We're here two hours a month.
Right, right.
Except tonight.
Except tonight.
We're making up for December's.
Joe?
No. I just said we're making up for December's meeting that we canceled.
All right, so you have in front of you the discussion and consideration of recommending the approval of the renovation amount. I'll entertain a motion.
Please keep in mind, the motion should be an affirmative motion. You can vote it down, but it should be an affirmative motion, just to make sure that we all are on the same page. That would make it easier to understand.
Sure.
Okay, I would make a motion then not to spend.
Again, it should be an affirmative motion, Dean. The motion has to be an affirmative motion. So somebody, if you're against it, somebody else should, that's for it, should make the motion affirmative. You would vote against that.
To move this along, and I'm going to vote no for this, but I will make a motion.
So motion by Alder Person Turchi?
Motion to what?
We have to motion to affirm, but I'm going to tell you how I'm going to vote too. So I'm just being very smart tonight.
That's perfectly fine to do.
Can I do that, Steve?
You're, I mean, you're, you're basically motioning to vote, right?
I'm motioning to vote. That's how this works, guys. So I'm motioning to vote, so you know how to vote.
I'll second that.
And a second by Garza.
All right.
Shanna?
So you're voting on an affirmative motion, voting it down would be against the motion.
If you don't want to spend the money, it's a nay.
It's a nay, right.
Make it easy for everybody.
Motion by Alder Person Turchi, seconded by Alder Person Garza, recommending approval of A&amp;N contracting of Hartford, Wisconsin to renovate the City Hall Council Chambers for $46,821, plus cost to repair walls, which will be done on a time and material basis up to an additional $8,179 for a total of $55,000.
So now that the motion is read, now you can make comments like that?
Again, the comments are only clarification. Don't take a vote at this time. It's for clarification. Comments are for clarification. Then move on to the vote.
So again, go ahead.
Yeah, we're just clarifying that we're moving this forward to vote for the approval of $55,000 to be spent on renovating this room.
I'm sorry, can you repeat what you just said? If you vote for this, you're voting to spend $55,000. If you vote against it, and enough people vote against it, it fails and it doesn't.
That's what I said.
It is for the fourth time.
So the vote is up for voting?
Yeah, so any final comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, say nay?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion is defeated. Item C, discussion and consideration of recommending approval of the marked changes to the Mid-Marin Municipal Court Agreement. Steve?
I'm sorry.
Back to you, Steve.
One more, Steve, that's all we got.
I'm going to have a 20-minute symposium on what this is all about. No, I'm kidding. Discussion.
Tell us about health insurance.
So the Mid-Marin Municipal Court, as you see in front of you, the executive summary, we talk about how many, how many communities are part of the Mid-Marin Municipal Court. Each one of those communities can have courts in their own individual community. Some actually share the same location. In the city of Hartford, we actually have it right here in the council chambers, now with glue on the walls. Now anyways, the bottom line is, is that, again, that was a joke. So 18 other communities, there's two new communities that would like to join, and there is one that is, or two that are coming off. So it's just a switch of those municipal communities joining us. It's a shared cost, right? It's like a co-op. And again, those two new communities are coming on, include the city of Sheboygan Falls and the town of Fredonia. So you're approving the amendment to this. There's also some cleaning up in the agreement. You have the red line version, I believe, and you've all studied that. Again, what this does is just cleans up our agreement with Mid-Marin and allows us to add the two other additional communities. As I mentioned on there, the executive summary, there's a cost savings to the city every time another community joins us because again, all those costs are shared separately. So you're broadening your base.
Thanks, Steve. So you have in front of you the discussion and consideration of recommending approval of marked changes to the Mid-Marin Municipal Court Agreement. Motion by Alder Person Turchi, seconded by Alder Person Tomacek. Shanna?
Motion by Alder Person Turchi, seconded by Alder Person Petchacek, recommending approval of the marked changes to the Mid-Marin Municipal Court Agreement.
All right, any final discussion or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Motion passes. Last item on the agenda is adjournment. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Savage.
Motion by Alder Person Webb, seconded by Alder Person Savage, to adjourn at 9:00 PM.
Any final discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? We are adjourned.